Good evening, this is Enid Lapellis. Today is January 11th and the time is 8:01 PM. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on the nation's principle, liberty, justice for all. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those town council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present. Members, when I call your name, respond in the affirmative. DeeDee?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
Jason?
Present.
Terry? Terry was going to be remote, he told me. Terry, you there? John?
John Formicella here.
Tony?
Tony here.
Dawn?
Dawn here.
Kevin will be remote. Myself, Enid, we're here. Okay, so we'll just look for Terry, who said he would be here.
Kevin on?
Kevin is going to be on remote, I believe. He should be here, too.
Councilmember Reed won't be here this evening.
Right. And John is taking his place during LNA. Thank you, Mr. Formicella. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting as follows. Town council members, designated staff, invited presenters, and members of the press, they attend in person or remotely. Public access to this meeting will be limited to joining this meeting as follows. A limited number of in-person public attendees will be permitted based upon the reduced capacity of the meeting room pursuant to the governor's executive orders. Any member of the public wishing to attend in person may see meetings@monroct.org at least 24 hours in advance. You will be notified as to whether or not space is available. All members of the public may attend remotely as follows. Be it a computer, tablet, or smartphone app link, or phone app 1-872-240-3311, and the access code. Please refer to further information throughout the end of this agenda regarding this remote electronic meeting. Okay. Consent calendar. Are there any objections to the consent calendar as presented?
Madam Chair? No objection, just want to note that the one item at the end of our consent calendar did go through LNA and was moved unanimously to the council for its approval.
Yeah, well, John Formicella, I think is going to report on the LNA meeting. Okay, I'm hereby passing the consent calendar as presented. Communications, hereby ask that communication items, A through K, be referenced in the minutes of the meeting. Public participation, is there anybody on the phone or anything?
I don't know.
I see Steve Kirsch.
If there's anyone on the call that wishes to speak during the public participation section, please remember to unmute yourself and indicate a desire to speak.
I see Steve Kirsch there.
Seeing none.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, we have one appointment. Mr. Rooney was going to do this if he were going to be on it remotely. I will just do it. Let me just find it. Okay. Appointments, Resolution 21-06, to consider an act upon a resolution approving the first selection of Veronica Condon, Republican, of nine, Stable Ridge Road, to the Library Board of Trustees with a term ending November 30, 2025, to fill a vacancy left by Donalyn Wales. I will make the motion. Do I hear a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kellogg, any discussion first? On the appointment? No, because you made it.
My letter is before you. Ms. Condon is a 27-year resident Monroe. She's got experience in schools, a long-term substitute for Jack Calawich School, and she is very interested in serving the Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Bauer?
Madam Chair, just, I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Condon on the Commission on Aging for her time, as well as seeing the many contributions she's made throughout different positions in the town of Monroe. I think she will be a fantastic addition to the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion? So we're voting, all in favor of this motion. Signify by aye.
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 Jason Mauer, aye.
Yes. Yeah, so we have eight people tonight, so it passes eight to zero.
Seven.
We have seven.
I beg your pardon, yes?
Seven, Madam Chair. Seven.
Seven. Well, Terry's not here, and Kevin, I'm sorry. I knew about, I should have known about that. Okay, action items, looking at C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is John Formicella, Secretary for the LNA Subcommittee. This evening, we did meet at 7 o'clock, both remotely and in person, and we discussed a number of items today, including the CDC Supplemental COVID-19 Vaccine Resistance Agreement, which was already passed in consent calendar, as Councilmember Mauer stated. We also discussed the Center for Policing Equity Research Agreement, which is Resolution 2107, as well as the Second Amendment to the MOA between the Town of Monroe Board of Education for the Joint Finance Administration, Resolution 21-08, as well as an agreement between the town, or a potential agreement between the town and Goldman Gruder and Woods, which is a legal engagement agreement, Resolution 2109, as well as we discussed the potential for a lease agreement with ARX Wireless. That will not come before town council at this meeting. All the resolutions passed unanimously for this town council's consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, discussion on this? Okay, going on to...
Oh, Madam Chair, I thought you were going to go to the committee.
I was only going on the ones that are people here. Go ahead, no, please.
Playing and zoning public works. I went to the Park and Rec meeting and they elected their new membership and set their fees for the upcoming vaccine.
Okay. Going on to our first election.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My update time will be another update on COVID. So the case rates, no surprise, I'm sure to everyone, that they have increased in the last few weeks. We're averaging about just over eight and a half new cases per day. Our total, as of today's reports, since the start of the pandemic, is 815 cases. The update on testing, which is good news, we have been working very diligently with the state Connecticut, trying to get additional testing in Monroe, in working with the state and one of their vendors, Community Health Center, Inc., they will be providing free drive-through testing every other Wednesday. This will not, this will start next week, January 20. It will be similar as to the last time, drive-through swab testing, slightly different process they have relative to signing up. They'll have an online ability to sign up and put your information in, which is compared to actually being on site. So we'll be rolling out some information on that in the near future. The big news, I'm sure everyone is anxious to hear about, is where we are with vaccination. So the vaccination process is, you know, very much evolving rapidly. It changes quite a bit. We don't always get a lot of clear information from the state of Connecticut regarding how things are rolling out and, you know, and some of that to their, you know, defenses because they are constantly evaluating where the supply is, what the demand is, and how and, you know, fast they can push stuff out. We have, or we are still in technically the Phase 1A of vaccination rollout. And to be clear, you know, the phases and determining who gets vaccinated and what phases, that's determined by the state, that's not a town decision. We have to make certain assertions that we're only vaccinating people that are eligible at this time. We've done a couple of clinics here in Phase 1A with a lot of assistance with, you know, everything ranging from SERC to the medical reserve corps, our full emergency management team, and we've given out over 100 vaccinations. As you can imagine, we get relatively small allotments, but we did get more vaccine this week. We're planning on another clinic later this week, where we'll do up to 80 more individuals. And as you might have gathered, you know, right here in council chambers for these smaller We, again, we're still talking about the Phase 1A, which is basically healthcare workers and first responders. The system that we utilize requires employers to certify and upload eligible staff to a centralized system, so that's done by Human Resources here for our people. But what's important to know is that the system allows anyone who's in the system to make an appointment at any time. So since we have had our own personnel go to other locations, either they go to, for example, hospitals or other areas to get vaccinated, we have also vaccinated others that are eligible because once they're in the system and you have an available clinic, anyone can see those available appointments. But it has been working pretty smoothly. The big news is the start of Phase 1B. So the state had indicated that they were looking to move this forward a little bit faster, actually, and it said last week that individuals over the age of 75 and certain people that would be categorized as essential workers would be included in Phase 1B. Just today, we got preliminary information about the rollout of the phase, which we expect to begin next week. We've been told that those over the age of 75 will be the first target group in Phase 1B. So we anticipate that on Thursday, the state is going to be rolling out a direct enrollment process, which will be on the state website, also supported by a two-on-one phone-based system for those that not, would not want to use a website or may not have that capability. We were, we will be meeting with our internal team to make sure we're supporting that as much as necessary, but we're still waiting for more information on the state system. Again, it was just announced today. We know that certain healthcare systems are going to be contacting their patients directly and encouraging them to enroll and possibly trying to assist them with things like appointments. We expect that people will be able to get vaccinated at a variety of locations. The existing vaccinators, such as the healthcare systems, we will certainly continue to do the limited number of, you know, as many appointments as we can do based upon the vaccine that we have, that we're given. And we meet on a regular basis to try and make sure that we can push out as much as we can to our residents. We will be doing that. So more information will come out very soon. Again, I think Thursday's going to be a big, a big day relative to getting people aware of that website and how to get themselves pre-registered so that once appointments are ready, which could be as early as a week or so, they will be able to do so. And then, as far as the other, you know, who else has been included in the frontline essential workers, it's an extremely broad group based on different sectors. We do know that it does include education, I know that's a big question. It will certainly include, again, it's a very broad, broad range. They don't have a final listing available, but there's things such as grocery workers, truck drivers, delivery, public transit, et cetera. So more to come. What they have at least is what various groups will be allowed to do. Again, those that are in certain sectors, again, we expect will continue to rely upon the employers to upload qualified employees under their system, and that will be the process. Once we get past all of the Phase 1B groups, the future phases is where it's basically up to anyone. That, we have absolutely no information on at this point, other than they're saying, you know, we'd start by the summer. But that's a little bit too far out. I think they need to get, we need to get past this much larger 1B group to see where we are in terms of supply and demand. So more information to follow. I did send out some information to the community. I appreciate everyone sharing. There's multiple avenues by which we sent out information, ranging from email, Facebook, Code Red, local media, and of course, our town's COVID website, webpage, I should say. And that's how we will continue to get information out of the community as to how these vaccination phases roll out. Other than that, the other, only other two things I want to note was that Mr. Cobza, who's here, had announced that public schools will start back in a hybrid model that was started today. And the other information that I just thought was, would be something that might be of interest, is that the state was reporting that hospital and ICU capacities remain within safe limits, which I think is an important piece to keep in mind, even as cases are going up. We've been saying throughout this that cases have been impacted, hospitals have not been, you know, impacted in a way that would make it unsafe. On the backside, I did give you a report that came out of state showing the first week of January and the current occupancy of each hospital. So we'll see statewide, 78% occupied inpatient and 61% occupied in ICUs. And I will put certainly this update, which I just finished, because I want to put this up in the council packet as well, so that everyone has it online as well as the public. But, you know, the point is, the capacity's there, and you have to remember that the capacity is there, even with hospitals continuing to do their normal, you know, routine operations. Back then, capacity was of concern, there was really nothing going on with COVID cases, and ICs were filled with nothing but COVID, and now it's, you know, all your, all your typical patients that you would expect that would require an ICU bed, as well as COVID. That's, that's my update for this evening.
I have a question. So if Thursday, I think I understand what you're saying, if Thursday morning I went on WW MonroeCT19, would have been saying you can sign up, just pretending, at CVS Monroe, et cetera?
Now, what I anticipate is that there will be a state website, a state webpage, that will allow you to register, and then hopefully either be notified of when you can make an appointment, or possibly make an appointment.
So where will we get the...
That will be a state-run system. We will certainly link to it, and we will push it out there. So you, yes, you will be able to get to it from our town page, absolutely. Again, we don't have a whole lot of specifics yet. I will say that the state has been very clear that they will not, or we will not be emulating the states where it's just first come, first served, and people are forced to camp out and have long waiting lines. Everything is told, as of today, we're told that everything will be by appointment. So they're also planning on, throughout the state, although I do not have locations for our area yet, but they are planning on holding mass vaccination efforts at large venues, such as Rensler Field, the Civic Center, and other large locations. So you could imagine perhaps some larger venues in our area that may be tapped for that, but again, we have not been informed of any as of yet. We've been told that we're working on Hapdo tomorrow, that we're going to bring online in the coming weeks. So, again, so all of that, plus our healthcare systems in the mix, plus the existing, you know, all the local health departments that have chosen to offer vaccinations as well, of which, as you know, we are large. But obviously, our, our capacity is going to be, you know, we're not Rensler, right? It's a lot more, a lot more space, a lot more capacity, so.
Thank you.
You're too young, anyway.
Yeah. I'll line say I'm older. Okay, so, no other questions or any discussion from Mr. Kellogg?
No, thank you.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, so going on to new business, A, donations, Mr. O'Rourke.
I move that we accept the following donations. I, $2,000 from Julie Butler for Community and Social Services. I, $1,500 from John and Cheryl Rajbolt for the food pantry. I, $1,912 from Washington Lodge Number 19 for the food pantry.
Okay, do I hear a second?
John Formicella, second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to, again, reemphasize our...
Oh, God, can you shut up?
You know, the, if you, if you look at the total donations to the food pantry and social services this past, that were stepping at this meeting, it's over $13,000, and these are significant components of that. And we certainly extend our gratitude to everyone, and especially these large donors.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Otherwise, if we vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Jason Mauer, aye.
It passes seven to zero. Going on to B, Resolution 21-07, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding Center for Policing Equity Research Agreement.
Boo. Accept the following resolution titled, "Resolution Regarding Center for Policing Equity Research Agreement." Resolution Number 21-07, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first elected of the Town of Monroe, and John Salvador, Chief of Police, are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe, the research agreement and any associated documents binding between Policing Equity, Inc., for data collection and information sharing.
Okay, I hear a second?
John Formicella, second.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as my memo outlined, several years ago, the town agreed to participate in this independent study. It was with the College, University of New York. That data collection effort is now migrated to, I believe it's the same people, but it's under Policing Equity, Inc. Chief Salvatore and I have discussed this, and he's indicated that we will not continue in this endeavor at this time. Again, the goal of the study is to improve policing practices and community relations. And it has been reviewed by the town attorney, with, I believe, some minor negotiation as well, his letter of opinion detached, and we ask that you move this forward.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
This was discussed at LNA and passed with unanimous consent.
Okay. Going on to a vote, all in favor of this?
Aye.
Okay.
Jason Mauer, aye.
Dan Aguilar, aye.
So this passes seven to zero. C, Resolution 21-08, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding Second Amendment to MOA application for the Joint Finance Administration. Mr. O'Rourke?
I move that we, we accept the following resolution titled, "Resolution Regarding Second Amendment to MOA," BOE for the Joint Finance Administration. Resolution Number 21-08, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first elected of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe, the Second Amendment Memorandum of Agreement, associated documents binding between the Monroe Board of Education for the Joint Finance Administration.
Okay. A second?
John Formicella, second.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you. So, again, you're well aware that we entered into a MOA with the Board of Ed in regards to providing administrative support while we evaluated the concept of a joint finance administration. That was extended in a First Amendment through January 15. So I have had, we've had several meetings, Mr. Cobza, Mr. Bonavsky, and I, along with our HR Director, both the prior interim director, Craig Bursh, our current director, and our collective opinion after going through processes that we feel the joint function is feasible and it's beneficial to both parties. We understand it's, and fully intend to bring more details to both this body as well as the Board of Ed in terms of the specifics and how we think this would roll out. And obviously, we are, we're planning to move forward, I guess, is the, is the end game, but again, we understand it's subject to approval of both bodies. We'd look to implement this for July 1 of '21. So in the effort to just finalize a plan for your consideration, as well as the board's consideration, which we want to do sooner rather than later, this is not something we're anticipating will take us much longer to get to a point where we will be able to come to both, both bodies with more specifics regarding how this would look, how the numbers look, you know, and some of the operational considerations. So we will be looking to do that in short order. But in the interim, while we do that, we would like to, we're proposing an extension of the MOA through the end of this fiscal year. And I asked Mr. Cobza and Mr. Bonavsky to join us as well, and certainly entertain any questions you may have, or comments, or questions for them. I do want to know, I know it was circulated earlier today to council via email, and has also been updated in the online packets, but the MOA before you this evening is slightly changed from the original, just to remove the acting, the word "acting" from Mr. Cobza's title for obvious reasons, and apologize for the oversight.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this matter came before LNA, and all our members agreed that the extension was appropriate at this time, and we look forward to reviewing the final agreement between the Board of Education and the town.
Okay, any other discussion? Mrs....
Thank you. Before I ask my question, I just want to express my concern about the situation in Washington, and certainly hoping for a peaceful transition, as I'm sure we are. The, I understand some of these questions have been raised in LNA, but I would like to ask them again, just to make sure that they get into the public record, and my thoughts also. First of all, are, do, are we aware of, are there any other towns that are doing this?
Yes.
There are? Can you tell me who they are?
Mr. Bonavsky has...
Madison is one.
Madison.
Madison.
Madison, welcome.
And they, and they have had conversations with him.
And you have had conversations?
I've spoken with the Director of Finance of Madison.
Okay, great. That's good. Is, was there any concern about that this, particularly in LNA, that this agreement blurs the line at all between Mr. Bonavsky's duties to the town and to the Board of Ed?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
I said, was there any concern that this position blurs the line, if you will? I can't think of a better way to...
Blurs the line?
Well, my thought is, this may have been discussed in LNA, and if it is, you know, certainly enlighten the full council, that, you know, Mr. Bonavsky would be an employee of the Town of Monroe and also the Board of Education. And the Board, as, as we well know, since we can't look at their budget, the Board of Education is autonomous, that they don't, we, we don't have any say over that. So now we have an individual that is having a say over the budgets, input into the budgets of both places. I mean, where, where does loyalty lie? And let me go back and say, this... And let me go back and say, this is not specific to Mr. Bonavsky, it's the position I'm talking about.
Well, I can, I certainly don't want to speak for, for Joe or Ron, I mean, my perspective, you know, I would certainly hope that the loyalty for all employees, whether employed by the municipal side or the Board of Ed side, the loyalty is to this town and its residents and citizens and taxpayers. So I think, I think that there should not, you know, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a line. We should be all coordinating and communicating together. I think that, you know, certainly there is, you know, there are, yeah, to your point, there are certain things where the Director of Finance is going to be involved in more details, but the Director of Finance does not have any authority to make any budget transfers on either side of the, on either side of the House, so to speak. It falls upon either the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, or the Town Council. So it's not like this position could do anything other than make certainly recommendations. But, you know, the coordination and communication and consistency of policy and procedure, I think, are something that we, at least in my conversations with, with Ron and Joe, like we feel are, are, you know, are significant and very much welcome.
The, well, as Director of Finance for the town, Mr. Bonavsky signs off on warrants, right? Would he be doing that on the Board of Ed side also?
He does it already. As do I. Required to.
Right. And is there an additional, is an additional signing on that? Or is it just the two of you?
All warrants are signed off by the Director of Finance, the Town Treasurer, and the First Selectman.
Okay.
And Board of Ed warrants are also signed off by the Superintendent.
So that, so currently, or proposed, would be you signing off on both of those sides, if you will?
That's being done right now.
Now, okay.
Even before all this was put into place, all warrants, all Board of Ed warrants were signed off by those four individuals.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any possibility, just so that we have it in writing, so to speak, that, that we can get a legal opinion citing other counties or, you know, other cities, states, not states, other towns that do this? And the
Sure, I'd be happy to pursue a legal opinion.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we need a vote on this, all in favor of this motion?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, Jason, Mr. Mauer.
Before we move on to a vote, Jason Mauer, I believe that as of right now, I am ready to approve the extension of the MOA. I do have one request of our Superintendent, our Selectman, and our Finance Director, Enboli, from the, what's been put forward here. I don't think this will be necessary because of the fact that it's, it's been said that we expect to have this done before the start of the new fiscal year, but if there is a need for another extension for any reason, I would just ask that the three of you, as you did come to this meeting, come to that meeting with whatever plan you have put forward, you have put together at that time, with some more details, just to show the, how things have progressed over the six months.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
That's, that's fair, and I think our intention is to provide those details for a, for a decision prior to that anyone, so, but understood.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Martin?
Yeah, I have one additional question, if I may ask Mr. Cobza a question.
Sure.
Mr. Cobza, simultaneously as this is happening, the, the research and the work into forming this new, you know, what we're talking about here, has there been given any consideration to reinstituting the search for a new finance person on the Board of Ed side?
We can talk about it, it's part of the whole policy. One of the tricky things with this, you know, trying to do this over the past year, circumstances that they were, have made this whole process a lot slower, really wanted to try to see if we could finance our system. Between the Town and Board, and probably more importantly, you know, first like McKellis said, to improve communication transparency between the two. I imagine some of you saw some of the information, some of the, some of the news that just came out recently, one of our neighborhood towns, and some of the issues they had, and I think a lot of that was, you know, I don't think it was, you know, malintended there, but clearly, I think a lack of communication. This past year has been incredibly challenging, but I think, you know, of course, there is a silver lining in all this. We have, I mean, I have an outlook like that, the communication by having, you know, Mr. Bonavsky's position, has been really helpful, it's been helpful for me, I hope it's been helpful for the town. Communication has been, has been really helpful. So, you know, we have, back to your question, you know, we've approached the idea of looking for, looking for the efficiency of having a joint department. So, you know, quite honestly, we haven't looked at, we know what the other, you know, we know what the other structure looks like, and, you know, this past year, you know, at this point, this is what we're, want to pursue this, to try to, you know, keep those efficiencies right there.
When, when you refer to efficiency, are you talking about financial?
I think there's, there's financial efficiencies, and I think, you know, not just, you know, that's much just in the, in the position, but also streamlined services. I think one of the easiest examples I can give was, you know, we had, we repaved the driveway at the high school.
I knew you were going to say the driveway, yes. It's a good example.
We repaved the driveway at the, at the high school, and we ran into a problem with the drainage. And I think what would have happened, you know, quite honestly, what would have happened in the past was we would have gone out to a third-party, you know, vendor, and they would have demanded we charge this, you know, probably even higher than what we paid to have some of that drainage worked on. The nice piece about, you know, having Mr. Bonavsky there was, oh, the DPW, they came out there, they did work for, I think, a pretty significant savings. We were able to get it worked. But I think that's the kind of relationship we want to see, you know, develop moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. So, all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Okay.
Jason Mauer, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Passes seven to zero. Resolution 21-09, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding Goldman Grutter and Woods LLC Legal Engagement Agreement, additional special counsel. Mr. O'Rourke?
I move to accept the following resolution titled Resolution Regarding Goldman Grutter and Woods LLC Legal Engagement Agreement. Resolution Number 21-09, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe, the legal engagement agreement and any associated documents binding between Goldman Grutter and Woods LLC as additional special counsel.
Okay. Go ahead, second.
Down for McKellis, second.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as indicated in my cover memo, Attorney Lito has recommended that we add Goldman Grutter and Woods as additional special counsel availability. I defer to him to discuss this further, but suffice to say, to further add additional resources available to the town at the same favorable rates that we have for most of our general council members. So I believe Attorney Lito is on the call.
I am. Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Thank you, members of council, for considering this, and I didn't want this to be on anything but the full agenda, so we can have an, an open discussion about it, but I think our First Selectman put it well. Our managing partner has agreed to, agreed to the, provide legal services through the resources and attorneys that we have in our office, should the need arise at the same rate, $150 an hour, that other counsel has been engaged, including myself as Town Attorney, as well as Attorney Moreno's office. We were able to identify two attorneys in the office specifically, one, Attorney Matthew Woods, who's been the Town Attorney in the city of Milford through, for 30 years, through various different mayors there, and Attorney John Rebus, who has a specific knowledge in planning and zoning matters and other matters. And the way the courts have been during COVID the last year, there hasn't been very many opportunities to engage outside counsel for litigation matters, other special assignments, and scheduling conflicts or commitments that may be beyond the scope of the availability of just having a single attorney handle those matters. So this provides us with additional resources and a seamless opportunity to have the town's matters covered without having to revet and re-explain the issues to third parties that would be, most would be unwilling, as most of us have been on council for a long period of time, unwilling to work for the rate that the town has been accustomed to paying. So rather than in an emergency or in abundance of caution, having to present this retainer to the council in a special meeting, should the need arise, or in a future meeting, I thought it would be appropriate to have that authority granted now.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Well, I actually would defer to Jonathan, because I think he has LNA issue.
Sure. This was discussed in LNA, and the members asked various questions, but this agreement was passed in LNA unanimously, to be brought forward before council.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Frenchel. Mr. Lito, can you hear me? It's Dee Martin.
I can, Ms. Martin.
Okay. I just, can we have the record reflect that this, this firm is the firm that you work with? Is that, is that correct?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. Is, could I just, is it appropriate for me to ask, is there any reason at this point I think we have a need for additional counsel? Is there something coming up that, that we don't know about or something?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. That's a good question. It was a question I was asking in LNA, and I did address it. There is no specific matter or specific need that I've identified where we would need to engage any other members of my firm, or any other firm for that matter. As you know, we recently brought Attorney Rose Marks before council for his subject matter expertise. Specifically, the thought arose based upon the infrequency that counsel meets with, although it feels frequent when you're on council, when you're not on council, it does feel like, based upon our charter, that we do need to access resources quickly for certain matters at times. And specifically, as I mentioned, the courts are becoming more prevalent with their scheduling because of the remote nature of all of the hearings and proceedings. They are less flexible with conflicts, time conflicts, and unavailability conflicts. So I'm having, we're having issues as it is with scheduling already, because the courts are, you know, deeming you to be available on a more frequent basis, based upon the electronic nature of the interaction, the court interactions, the court hearings. So we do have a number of, for instance, tax appeals that are still pending, that are being defended on behalf of the town. There are other various issues that may come up that would need the assistance of special counsel, mostly on the planning and zoning side of things, from the litigation standpoint, enforcement matters, things of that nature. So, again, it was in an abundance of caution that I suggest this to the First Selectmen, so that there would be an easy, seamless opportunity without having to go out, find, identify, formally engage, and then have it outside counsel approved, and most importantly, at the rate that has been bargained for. I think it's an excellent opportunity. The firm I work for has agreed, the managing partners have agreed to offer, like I said, Attorney, Attorney Woods is specifically someone who's had 30 years of experience as municipal attorney, should we need it, and I think it's an excellent, excellent bit of additional firepower, for lack of a better way to put it, that we have in our back pocket should the, should the need arise.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lito. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Mauer?
Thank you very much, Jason Mauer. I want to thank Attorney Lito for bringing this forward, along with Selectman Kellogg. As mentioned, I did ask a few questions in LNA, and just for the sake of putting my rationale onto the record, I want to disclose some of those details, some of which have already been disclosed, one of which is the extremely favorable rate that we would be receiving at the same rate as one of our other outside counsel, as well as Attorney Lito as Town Attorney. In addition, as Attorney Lito met, previously mentioned, the fact that we have seen the courts opening up and the docket starting to really flow in all of cases, including any tax appeal cases or anything of the sort, that would be, the town would be involved in maybe coming up at a rapid pace that may overflow the calendars of both our already retained councils, as well as our Town Attorney. Having somebody there would be extremely helpful. In addition, one thing that Attorney Lito mentioned in LNA, which I thought was a very good point, was if Attorney Lito were ever unable to serve in his capacity as Town Attorney for any reason, having a firm with attorneys who are very familiar with his record-keeping and file-keeping already at the ready and at the same rate to be able to bring on on a moment's notice. And finally, the fact that there is no upfront retainer, meaning that we are not paying anything out of pocket just to bring on this retainer agreement, it is purely on an as-needed basis. I would put my support behind this.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
So this motion passes seven to zero. That's all the business for tonight, so we're adjourning at
Second public participation.
Madam Chairman, you need second participation.
Oh, I'm sorry, because we got all involved in the thing. Okay, so second by John Paul McKellis.
No, seconded by former, no, we need, sorry, we need a second
We need second public participation.
Yeah, so we need to ask, that's the only thing we have left.
I, I knew it was there, but there was nobody in the audience.
No. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like, I would like to speak for second participation.
Okay.
Public participation.
Go ahead.
Jennifer Aguilar, 32, Surrey Lane. I'm sorry, I actually wanted to speak to this after Mr. Kellogg's comments, but I wanted to publicly give out the Monroe Playground Foundation huge credit, and to ask Mr. Kellogg if it's possible, I know that it's budget time, and we're working on the budget, I know it's going to be a tough year, but if you would consider putting any amount in the budget for the Monroe Playground Foundation to go towards the playground. I believe they are, I don't have their numbers, but I believe after four years, they are at three, one-third per, one-third of the total $400,000 that they need. I just don't see them getting their money without us, without the town helping, without taxpayer money. That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Could we make a discussion about that? Just our comment. Done? Okay. All in favor of, we're adjourning at nine?
Madam Chair, before we move on, we simply need to ask if there's any other public participation, any other colors who wish to participate.
Well, so why don't you just talk, you're a member of the council, why don't you just come forward and say what you want to, go ahead, Jason.
I, I don't. I was saying that that is a procedural thing that I don't, I was saying that that is a procedural thing that we have to do before we can move to adjourning.
Okay, any other public participation? All righty, seeing none, I'm adjourning this meeting at 8:54.